I don't have an agenda. I know, I don't have an agenda.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call us supervisors, please. Is that it? Is that the total? But you totaled it.
Oh, I should have told them, yeah. Is that a reading?
I think so. There are 11 supervisors present. Supervisors. Belsky, Brown, Geertsen, Gents, Gray, Meadows, and Morrissey are excused.
Is it Stocker excused?
Supervisor Stocker is excused. Oh, he... Yours didn't work. Okay. Supervisor Nudo is present. And then also, I'd like to make note that John Klinky is here tonight from Youth in Governance, so thank you for attending. This is his first committee of the whole. Supervisors, there has been a request from the public to... Citizens would like to speak on this. I know it's not on the agenda for public comments. Is there an objection from the board to giving the citizens two minutes to speak prior to the presentation? Supervisor Nordigan.
Thank you, Chair Uhas. I guess as long as it's a full understanding, we're not voting on anything tonight.
Correct.
This is purely informational.
Correct.
I don't know what questions they may have or comments they may have, support or against it, but I think those will be better at the committees or at the March 18th meeting, when we will be voting on that. Would it not make more sense to be then?
I'm asking the board.
Okay. Thank you.
Supervisor Grady.
So, the question is being presented is, shall we allow a citizen comment?
Yes.
Is that the question? I would say yes. I mean, we're going to have an informational presentation, which should not probably be on duly long. I don't see the room being so packed that we can't afford two or three minutes for each person to say their mind if they're here. So be it. That's my thoughts.
Any other discussion? Any other comments on this? All right. Citizens, I will allow you to speak. You will have two minutes to speak on this. So if you could state your name and address for the record and come up to the podium and write your name and address on the sheet that's on the podium right there.
I'm Ron Grimes, and I live at 3145 72nd Avenue. And this project will definitely impact me. I live just north of where this project is. And my property borders on the Pike Creek, South Branch of the Pike Creek. So I've lived there for 56 years. I've had floods many times over that many years. And I've shared pictures with Root Pike Win, Southeastern Sewer Pack County. And I support this project 100%. It will have a very positive impact on everything downstream. And the amount of trouble that I've put up with over those 56 years, twice I've had four and a half inches of water, floodwater, in my garage. So when you go home tonight, go out in your garage, stand in the middle, and envision four and a half inches of water up to your ankles. I've had that twice. And I've never collected... I had flood insurance all those years, paid it. It was as high as my property taxes. I never collected a dime off of it. And I got a letter about four years ago from FEMA telling me my flood insurance was going up 18% a year, as far as they could project it out. I don't own... I don't have a mortgage. I canceled my flood insurance. I bought myself a standby generator. I got three sump pumps in my basement. I can be in Europe, and it can... Power can go out. My generator comes on, and my sump pumps keep running. I paid for my generator in three years from not buying flood insurance.
Your two minutes is up, sir.
Thank you. But I support this 100%. It's going to have a big impact.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else wishing to speak?
Ladies and gentlemen, hi. Alderman Rockel-Lamaca, the 5th District, 2114 25th Avenue. I'm part of this committee, and I hope you support it because it's beneficial not only to the residents, the whole city of Kenosha. It's something we need to keep people from being flooded out. It's a no-brainer, in my opinion. Let's vote it up and keep it going. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizens wishing to speak? Any other citizens wishing to speak? Any other citizens wishing to speak? Hearing none, citizens' comments are closed. We will move on to the presentation on the Pike River South Branch Project.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for being here. We have a presentation tonight about the South Branch Pike River Project, something that's been in the works for quite a while. We're happy to be able to print this, very excited to do so. And just to make sure everyone knows me, I'm Andy Bueller, Director of Planning and Development. Pretty much everyone does know you. We have other project team members here that I'll introduce you to as we move along. Everyone should have the presentation on their desk. We also have it on the screen. So we wanted to kind of give you a brief overview of the project, kind of give you... let you know where it is, tell you what some of the project goals and benefits are, introduce you to our project partners, and then get into some of the numbers on how these things kind of all work out. So, starting out... There we go. So, project history. So as you can see there, in 19... There's... This has been around for a long time, knowing what's going on with the South Branch Pike River. And so back in 1983 and 1989, Sewer Pack or Southeast Wisconsin Regional Plan Commission had done an extensive study about the Pike River. And in that study, there were areas that they determined on the need to have, you know, check into water quality, habitat, and environmental aspects of the Pike River. So in their study, they were already looking at areas that, as a community, things needed to be addressed for the waterway. In 2013, there was the Big Pike River Plan that was put together by Root Pike Win. And from that, there were some great recommendations in regards to what improvements needed to be made with the whole Pike River, as well as the South Branch, which we're focused on today. And then in 2017, actually even before 2017, to get there, is Dave Giordano with Root Pike Win and myself had some conversations, just seeing the successes that were taking place on the North Branch in Racine County in Mount Pleasant, and to look into, are there ways to try to do those same type of improvements to our waterway with the South Branch that happened in the North Branch? And so there were discussions that were started to then look at bringing in Army Corps to see if that's a project that they would be interested in. So that gets us into 2017, where the Army Corps did come up, and they toured, and they looked at, and they were able to authorize up to $10 million in funding for restoration of the South Branch. And that was all done through a feasibility study, and we have Army Corps here that can get into it in more detail on a couple other slides. And from that feasibility study, there was a federal determination... A federal interest determination was made, meaning that this meets all the guidelines for them in their project, which is a 206 project, which again, that they'll get into a little later in this presentation. So now here, we're in 2025, but last year in 2024, we started to research some additional funding opportunities, look at some additional partners that could come along with this. And at that time, the Army Corps was able to finish the plans to a 60% design stage, which gave us some information, so we knew exactly what effects it would have on the environment and what effects that it wouldn't have. Okay. So I wanted to direct you to the location here. If you're not really familiar with the Pike River watershed, so on the screen you can see the North Branch that's up in Racine, and then the South Branch. So you have those two branches coming together, and they meet a little bit west of Petrovine Springs Park, and then they flow through Petrovine Springs Park and worked their way through Carthage and out to Lake Michigan. So on the South Branch, if you look at Highway K and 158 and S, all... Every one of us has probably driven past it and not even really realized that it's there, because it's really been turned into a ditch, and it was done that way to help with farming, so they could get waters off the farms and get them out of there as quick as possible. So it's not like you're driving by and you're seeing where it's at, because it's... Many times, it's just through a culvert or just a bridge over the way. So from that, we know that the whole South Branch, as well as the whole Pike River, is impaired. It's been determined that by the DNR and by the EPA. You know, it has very poor water quality, and it has degraded habitats. So this slide here gets into some of the... Diving into the critical aspects of the South Branch, and you can see, if you can look down into like the first slide there on the left, it talks about riparian area restoration, you know, high priority. Stream bank and channel restoration, critical. Wetland restoration, critical. And you can see that in our areas, which is in the southern portion of these slides here. So then, getting into the specific project area that we have here, which is between Highway K and Highway S, you can see the different properties that are being looked at. And from Highway K, you can see that the... In the plan, there is a design to move the stream bank from this light blue line that's curving up next to the railroad tracks, to move it over to the west and meander it, almost in the location of where it historically has been. I know Dave has researched out some mapping and photos from years past on where the waterway used to be before it was straightened out for farming purposes. And with this, if you can see a little bit, there's that hazy blue area, that's the floodplain. So that's showing that this whole corridor here from K to Highway S, almost all these properties highlighted in yellow, about of the 250 acres, about 200 of those acres are actually in the floodplain. So there is not the ability to develop it, and so farming has been the best use up to today. So with this, you can see that it's about 1.5 miles long, and and so now we're looking at trying to work with these 60% plans and work with... Looking at what the benefits are for this area. So with the project benefits, you can see them listed, as we're talking about reduced erosion, improving water quality in the area that we're looking at, as well as downstream. We're looking at increasing the native and open space for recreational purposes, establish native wetlands, woodlands, wet prairies and prairies, and increase quantity and quality of native plant and animal communities. Some of the additional benefits that come into place is to put a multi-use trail in, and if you saw in that other slide, there was an orange line going through that was a multi-use trail that would connect from Highway K up to S, and that would be about 1.5 miles long. On this slide, it's highlighted in that pink area. And with that, it connects the residential neighborhoods that are along south of Highway K there, and then it can work its way up to Highway S. And you can see the different trails and roadway networks that we already have in place or will have in place in the future that creates a network. So basically, you can get in from here, you could actually work your way to any of the colleges and universities, you can work your way to downtown. So it just adds to the network of the trail system for Kenosha County. So some of the specifics that we have of the projected outcomes, it would be restoring about 215 acres of the floodplain. It would be reducing 1,000 tons of sediment. I'm not even sure how to, you know, quantify that in your mind, but that's just a large number of sediment that's going in from our land, going into the stream and working its way into Lake Michigan. The 1.5 miles of stream channel are going to go from a straight ditch, and they would be meandered into what would be a typical waterway. We're talking about 200 acres of wetlands that would be being able to be created, and then that 1.5 miles of multi-use trail. So now I wanted to get into and introduce you to our project partners. And so we have some of them here today. We're going to start out with Army Corps. We have Captain Tom Keeney's here. We have Ivan Navarro, and then Robbie Slawinski. And then we'll have Dave Giordano from Root Pike Win present from his standpoint and his organization, and he'll also be presenting with the DNR. Josh Brown is not able to be here today just to talk about them being a partner in this project. And then again, after all that, we'll have Chris Walton come up and be able to talk about the numbers. And also on here, you can see that we have the Fund for Lake Michigan. Fund for Lake Michigan has already provided funding through our process to get where we are today. There was a lot of research that had to be done with wetlands and floodplains and structures, and all that work was... Some of that work was funded through the Fund for Lake Michigan. And then Dave and Chris will probably be able to talk a little bit more about how the Brookwood Foundation has looked to come in. So Captain Tom, if you want to come up here.
All right. Thanks. All right. Good evening, everyone. Happy to be here. So going over, if you... Next slide. Go to the next slide. So just a brief overview of USAs a whole, what is USAs? So Army Corps of Engineers, we're a federal agency. We fall under the Department of the Army, which is under Department of Defense. I am... You can see I'm active-duty Army, but our offices are majority federal employees, so government civilians. And we come out of the Chicago District, and we... So we work in northern Indiana, northern Illinois, and then Wisconsin. So that's why we're coming to support Kenosha County. Why did... What is the Army Corps of Engineers? Why did it start? So I guess, when the nation started, there weren't really that many engineers or colleges for engineering in the nation. Where were all the engineers? They were in the Army. So Congress directed the Army to create the Army Corps of Engineers, and we have existed ever since, providing projects and fulfilling needs for the citizens of the nation. And so mainly now, we execute, again, federal construction projects, projects in our regions, mainly focused on navigation, so you can think harbors, federal waterways. We do flood risk management, and then our other big one is ecosystem restoration, which this project falls into. So that leads into the CAP 206 authority. So for us to do a project, we need to have authority to do it by Congress. So that is what the CAP Section 206 is, is the Continuing Authorities Program, which allows us to perform projects related to aquatic ecosystem restoration, which this one would be. And the feasibility study decided it would have federal interest, and then we moved into design. So, yeah. In summary, we're excited to be here. We're happy to be here tonight. We're, yeah, happy to be partners with Kenosha County, and we look forward to continuing to work together in the future and completing the project. But we're here to answer any questions, field anything as needed, and thank you.
All right. Thanks, Captain Tom Keeney. Dave, if you'd like to come up?
I don't normally like to read from a piece of paper, but in this case, I want to make sure I got everything right, and I don't want to go wrong. So esteemed supervisors of Kenosha County, the opportunity you have in front of you will change the course of the Pike River South Branch, which is used... Has been used and abused for almost 150 years. The restoration of the South Branch is not just an environmental project, though. It's a promise to the next generation that we will do better. It is a commitment to preserving the water quality and ecological health of Lake Michigan. It is a solution that leaves the South Branch as good, or perhaps even better, than when farming began in this area. So why is this project important? We need to really kind of look at a history of the area, and Andy covered it pretty well, but in our Pike River watershed plan, 90% of the watershed is either changed, altered, or no longer available for those ecosystem services. So that was concluded in our Nine Key Element Plan that was completed in 2013. And a lot of really good information came from that plan. That plan was really based on a lot of water quality testing as well. So it wasn't just a bunch of environmentalists just dreaming this up. It was ground truth, and it had a lot of data behind it. One of the images, it's not in the deck, but if you look at the original 1836 land plot, you'll see that this area in the South Branch was predominantly wetlands, with some prairie around it. Over time, this area was ditched and tiled over the next 100 years, as the soil was very fertile, but it was really too wet to farm without significant modifications. The original meandering stream channel was straightened and bermed to convey stormwater more quickly out of those wetlands, so it could be farmed. Today, that land and the water have kind of paid the price for these man-made modifications. According to the EPA and the... Again, our Pike River-approved plan, hundreds of tons, as Andy said, of sediment are estimated to flow out of that area through erosion and sheet runoff. That's significant. This and other pollutant loads ignite the algae blooms along Lake Michigan. They prevent native fish from producing... Reproducing, and they really impact the quality of our beaches, the water quality on our beaches. The South Branch restoration will undo these traditional agricultural practices. This includes the dismantling, all right, get this, of almost 56 miles of drain tile in 216 acres. That's unbelievable. So that's how wet this soil, this area is, and that's how much farmers had to alter it to get that water off as quickly as possible. Now, it's no disrespect to the farmers, because they had to do what they had to do to put, you know, food on our table. But now we realize that we've got to undo that. It's terrible for the river, and has been terrible for a long time. Presently, this tile, like I said, rapidly flushes that water off the land and into the South Branch as quickly as possible. That creates this enormous erosive power, and is the reason why we have so much erosion and sediment that comes with it. If anybody has been to the North Branch, the restored North Branch in Mount Pleasant, you'll see all this reintroduced deep-rooted native plants that have a significant impact on reducing erosion, creating a lot of stormwater infiltration, and really bringing that area back in balance with nature. The project that rests in your hands directly addresses the issues and recommendations with, you know, from our nation's engineers, the Army Corps, who have been outstanding with this project. Root Pike's wind's vision of a restored South Branch and the plan's recommendations were introduced to the former county executive in Andy Bueller in 2016, and we're proud of that. The success of the North Branch restoration in Mount Pleasant, like I said, was evident, and so we brought that idea to the county, and luckily, the county accepted that and wanted to do better for the South Branch. So after the Army Corps of Engineers was engaged by the county in Root Pike Win, a grant of up to $10 million was, again, awarded in 2017. And through that effort, there was significant time and energy spent on trying to find all the different options that would be the best for this area. So fast forward, or I'm sorry. So there were a lot of tough questions that have been presented to this project over, what, is it eight or nine years now we've been working on this? And so recommendations from Supervisor Gersten, Carroll, Ned Whiskey, Nudo, Chairwoman, Brookmeyer, and staff have really sort of sharpened the edge on this project. It's pretty darn sharp. So fast forward to last December, when Root Pike Win secured an additional $2.3 million of grants for the project from the Brookwood Foundation and from the Wisconsin DNR through their Wetland Mitigation Program. And this now helps offset the county's cost. Our goal back five, six years ago was to try to find 1.5 for the project, and again, we're now at 2.3. So again, we're pretty proud of the fact that we've really tried to help offset the cost to the county. So I also want to thank, obviously, Andy, he's been involved in the very... From the very beginning, Shelley Billingsley, Chris Walton have helped, really helped perfect the numbers with this. It's very... It's difficult, especially with all the inflation and just the development that's occurring in our area. Prices are... Things are changing wildly. But I think the most important thing is that there's been bipartisan support for this project. And that's something that in, you know, at the present time, is challenged. And so what you have before you here today is a project that, I think, gains bipartisan support, and we all should be proud of that. So I'm getting close to the end. When we restore the South Branch, we will ensure the cleaner water to Lake Michigan, less erosion, more stormwater infiltration, and resilient ecosystems that enhance our community for decades to come. The restored South Branch will also provide new recreational opportunities, unique and embraced in such a densely developed area. Your support of the South Branch restoration will create a living legacy, a testament to our dedication to Kenosha's sense of place, or Kenogia. to our dedication to Kenosha's sense of place, or Kenogia, the place of Pike. So let's all come together, united, under our mission to make Kenosha better. Let us be the leaders that take bold action so that the next generation can inherit a thriving, healthy Pike River. The future of the watershed depends on the choices that we make with the South Branch. Together, let us choose to turn this land liability into an enduring community asset. Thank you.
But Dave, we also have you for the DNR.
Oh, okay. All right. I'm Josh Brown from the, no. So I just wanted to talk to you a little bit about the two grants that we recently received. One is from the Brookwood Foundation. This is a private foundation that generously stepped forward to help in this effort. They understand the impact that it will have on the South Branch and the whole Pike River watershed. The DNR grant is, it's a really good one. It's fairly complicated. The good news is that we've done a lot of the complicated stuff already to ensure that it's ready to go for this project. The DNR Wetland, Wisconsin Wetland Conservation Trust is really a bucket that when a development occurs and it impacts wetlands, the developer can write a check, give it to the DNR, and those wetlands can be disturbed with the requirement that the DNR will restore wetlands elsewhere. And the serendipity with that grant and where the major area of wetlands that needs to be restored in this project is absolutely beautiful. The amount of money that they have available from the funds that they bring in is about 60 acres. The area that we have in the South Branch is about 60 acres. So that's pretty cool. The other thing is they're looking for drain tile. So they want to take the worst condition, which, again, no offense to farmers, but it's drain-tiled farmland is what they consider the worst condition. So when they restore it to wetlands, back to wetlands and break those drain tiles, it now becomes one of the highest positions or restorations. So we obviously got a ton of drain tile on that site. And so when they saw it, the DNR saw the tile maps from the Army Corps, they were like, yeah, this is going to be a good one. So we're pretty excited about that. The other thing that's exciting about that DNR grant is they also, so there's money in there for acquisition, restoration, and short and long-term maintenance. And that's huge. You know, the short-term maintenance especially, it takes really, a really good three to five years to get these native plants established. But to also have, they set aside a certain percentage of that grant for perpetual maintenance. So that will help offset the county's cost in that 60-acre area when it comes to things like treating invasives and doing occasional prescribed burns. So that's, the DNR grant couldn't have come at a better time, obviously. We were looking to try and continue to offset the county's costs. And between the Brookwood Foundation and this DNR grant, we've kept our end of the bargain.
All right. Thanks, Dave.
Good?
Very good.
Thank you all very much.
So Chris Walton's going to come up and talk more about the numbers.
All right. So my role in this is, it all sounds good, but what does it cost us? And to be able to get there, we want to let you know what's happened so far. So the feasibility study that Andy alluded to, this is a 50-50 share with the county and the Army Corps. This has partially been offset with that Fund for Lake Michigan grant funds that we've already received. And then as of like August 2024, we were in the 60% design stage. So of that, that now starts to generate the 65-35 split that we have with the Army Corps. And if the project were to end today, we owe about $18,000 of those expenses. As they've already talked about, this has been going on since 2017, 2018, really ramping up in 2020. There's been numerous internal, external hours, both within the county, the Army Corps, Root Pike Wind. So to put a price on that, it's really intangible. So that brings us to the new path forward, which honestly, I would refer to almost like the only path forward. It's not often where we come to you five years later, and the cost of the county has reduced substantially. So how we got there, it plays big into what Dave and Root Pike Wind has been able to do with some of these grants, bringing in the DNR. Not only does that take off a section of acquisition costs, but also construction costs, which lowers the 65-35 split between the county and the Army Corps, almost to the degree of what we're estimating of around $900,000. So you bring that in, the 1.6, you can also look at this $425,000 of contingency and think that's way too low. Well, there's a reason for it being low. Within this land design and construction, the Army Corps and the numbers that they provided us include a 20% contingency. We added a contingency. On top of the contingency, because of this new path forward, they're going to have to alter designs. They're not able to give us specific construction costs and what it may end up being. They can give us very close estimates. They've given us estimates as of August 2024, so they revamped them slightly, and then we go from there. This also leaves us a little bit of room for error in case those numbers were short. Remember, this is 65-35 split. So in order for the Army Corps, if you go down now to the funding, where originally they were kind of capped at that $10 million. Now with this new revamped path, they're at about 9.6. It'll take an additional roughly $500,000 for them to reach back up to that cap, which then is $175,000 of our dollars. So the contingency is, if we're off by $500,000, 175 plus anything above the 500. So that's why you see what you see. And jumping down even further, we'll go to the county share, and this is where you see, originally, the plan was, the county will fund up to 6.6, will do nothing more and nothing less. So if the project starts to go over, we're going to have to shorten the scope. Here, we hopefully can able to hit everything that we need to do and stay under that limit and give us what we would need remaining at about 2.5. Between some of the grants, the parkland development and bonding, we already have a good portion of these funds. And then we have the Root Pike Wind initiative. And I call it initiative because everybody has on their desk, included in their packet, a letter of intent, to where they are fully invested in this project and are going, to the best of their ability, trying to get an additional 1.6 million to help offset our costs and to help this project go forward. That could potentially leave us at just under a million of extra funding that the county would have to come up with. We put it as the county share and the remaining funds required, because if we go to the next page, the initial resolution that's going to come forward is not to exceed 2.5, because even though we have good faith in Root Pike Wind, we can't go forward with a project where we may not have the funding, or they may not be able to reach the full 1.6. So we need the authority to be able to spend those additional funds. Since we're already on this page, I'll just kind of keep going on to what happens next. Obviously, there's continued outreach, and then the path that this initial resolution that will come would be March 12th, where it will hit PDEC, and March 13th, where it'll hit finance. And Public Works is still to be determined on which joint meeting they will join, whether it's on the 12th or whether it's on the 13th. And then back to the county board for hopefully approval on March 18th. So I will pass off to Andy and the rest, in case there's any questions.
Right. So if there's any questions that supervisors may have, again, we have Dave here, we have three members from Army Corps, including their engineer, if there's any questions there. So we're open to take questions.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And this is addressed through the chair to whomever, so it might be different. In citizen comments, we had two citizens come up and talk about flood mitigation. In this packet and in the discussion or the presentation, there was no discussion of flood mitigation. Can you explain what the effect of this project will have on flood mitigation? So we're aware of what it is?
Sure. So I think, just to step back a little bit on this, because, you know, there was another group of supervisors that heard a presentation, and from a standpoint of the original goals of the project and looking to see on how the flooding along the South Branch Pike River could be impacted in a positive way, is would this project have that type of outcome, even though it is a restoration project? It's not a flood mitigation project. That's a whole different number for the Army Corps, 205, I believe. And so from a standpoint of that, once we were able to get to the 60% plans and do some analysis on that, and allow Shelley, who's an engineer, to dig into it, she was able to determine that there was not going to be significant flood reductions, maybe some on the property, but not necessarily downstream. That the real focus, again, is going to be on the fact that it's a restoration project, and certainly that has positive outcomes with what happens, but does not have outcomes of if it was like a flood project.
Okay. Thank you. I just want to clarify that, so that way we aren't expecting one thing and don't get, and get something else. Then I see the timeline on the back page with the March 12th and 13th, and this is, I don't know if it's to Patty or who, but how will that work with the bonding? Or is that an issue, when it comes to the county board on March 18th, are we issuing bonds, or what is the plan for that?
That will be an initial resolution, similar to what we bring forward with the budget. So it'll be an initial resolution for the remaining potentially 2.5 million. We already have authority under one initial resolution that passed in 2022, that's for 2.2 million. This would be added to that. The project itself, because we already have authority, it can move forward without us going to sail right away. So the bonds would be sold in conjunction with our regular sale, authorized in July, sale in August.
Okay. Thank you. I had asked this when we had gotten a tour. Do you know what the property taxes on the parcels that we are acquiring, county property taxes are, that we will lose when we acquire them, since we don't pay taxes to ourselves?
I don't know what that figure is. I mean, we certainly can determine that through our, you know, our data that we have.
Okay. That would be great, just to know that, because that's money we're going to be losing. Are the trails, on the map, it showed that there's going to be trails. Are those included in the cost, or is that something after the fact we're adding?
It is included.
Okay. So that's included in the cost? Okay. And what is, what is the, the cost of the upkeep of the whole restored area, and like the legacy cost? Have we approximated that? Because we were told that the DNR, that they would help fund a part of that. Do we know what those legacy costs are?
Yeah, so the DNR funding would be for that segment, that is like 58 to 60 acres for that segment. The rest of that going forward, I'm not sure if that's been determined at all, Tom, if those prices are even, have been put together.
We'd have to look it up. That would be provided at completed design when we create an operating and maintenance, so an O and M.
Can you send Constance a microphone, please? Because I can't hear him, and neither can the people on the cameras.
Sorry. So, yeah, we usually, at the end of design, so when we complete 100%, that's when our team would create an O and M, operation and maintenance cost or manual. That lays out the plan for what that was. So we hadn't gotten to that point yet in the design. We're only at 60%. But, I mean, we could definitely get a rough figure for planning purposes.
Okay. That would be great, just to know when we're entering into this, what this is going to cost us every year to upkeep. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Decker. Supervisor Nordigan.
Thank you, Chair Uhasan. I don't know who would answer this. It might be you, Andy. How does this South Pike Branch compare to what they did up in the North Pike Branch? Is it a similar layout, ditching on farmland that had flood concerns, had miles of tile, you know, draining parts of it? Or, I mean, what kind of similarities, or is it very different, or do we have any idea at all?
Yeah, I'll start with that, and I'll let Dave maybe add in a little more, because he has more background on that from up there. But it, very similar. Now, one, their project on the north end was a flood mitigation project, but then on the south end, when actually Army Corps got involved, it ended up being a restoration project. So, but they had very similar situations on what was occurring up there.
So the same type of ditching, almost straight line to the south, was then mitigated to the meandering, hopefully what may have been similar to how it was prior to the farmers putting in what they need.
That is my understanding, right. And they did some backwater areas. So instead of necessarily always meandering, they had some areas, and then they cut some backwaters to allow fish to go and spawn and things like that.
Okay. Then moving forward with this project, and that was my question, it was going to be on the flooding as well, you said certainly not Downriver, because obviously that's where the water is going to move to. Where does this end up at eventually? Because I see that, you know, we stopped right around K, a little bit south of K there. There's, it kind of ends there. This project ends there. How much further down does the Pike River go? Or does this go north to the main branch? Which way does it, which way does the water
Right here.
Yeah.
Yeah. So if you're looking here, we're certainly down at the Highway K, and then you can see that the whole Pike South Branch in red goes all the way up where it meets the North Branch.
So the water's moving north?
It moves north, and then it flows east and back south.
Okay.
Out into Lake Michigan.
Got it. Okay. That's what I was wondering, is the water's got to be moving north and not to the south on that.
Correct.
I just wanted to get verification on that. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Nordigan. Supervisor Grady.
But there's a follow-up to that. The scope of this project only goes north of K, but the actual watershed is south of K, and it goes almost down to Whitecaps, does it not?
So the, yeah, so if you see there, Highway K, it actually starts just north of Highway 50, maybe right about Highway 50.
Right.
But that area there, there's been some, it's a very difficult area to do any restoration. We had looked into that a number of years ago, but it does start that far south.
Correct. So it's not the point that's going to be mitigated down there by Whitecaps, but that area would be affected by the proposed restoration, the fact that it would be somewhat improved, even though it's not directly within the project boundary. Is that correct?
That area would have no impact in and of itself. I mean, it would be upstream, although that is an area that I know that Root Pike Wind has had some interest in trying to work with the outlots that, from those subdivisions that were built there. All that floodplain and the water course was put in an outlot, and so there was, there is some thought. And as Dave looks to get funding and things, to potentially do some improvements in that area.
So the question is this. If this project were to go forward as proposed for Highway K and north, would the areas south of Highway K benefit from increased drainage capability? And I guess that's the question. Yeah.
I don't know if I can really answer that from a standpoint of what impact that would be.
That'd be very interesting to know, even though the areas are outside the scope of the project, would they still benefit from it, specifically those areas south of Highway K? I think we should have an answer to that. I'd like to know.
We certainly can look and see what that might be.
Thank you.
Anything else, Supervisor Grady?
That's all, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much. Vice Chair Gashke. Vice Chair Gashke.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, just a quick question about the multi-use path probably for Director Bueller. Um, when I served on PDEC, I think I remember talking about the fact that not only would these provide recreational opportunities, but they would also provide access for maintenance vehicles and things like that, um, potentially. Is that still the case, that the multi-use path would be able to, uh, provide, uh, maintenance vehicle use, uh, access to certain more remote areas?
Yeah. So, when you take a look at this here, this is the, the path is in the black dotted line. You can see it, two sections where it's very straight. It's very straight because it actually would be running under the lines of ATC, the, the power lines that they have, they're the high tension power lines. And so, underneath there, that would be, uh, you, being able to be utilized to provide access for ATC for their, their purposes, but would also be able to be used recreationally for the public.
All right, thank you. So, they, it would not only provide recreational purpose, but also a very practical purpose for ongoing maintenance for the power lines or other things then, so.
Correct.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you Vice Chair Gashke. Supervisor Carroll.
Yes, thank you. Um, so a couple of the questions that I have, um, just, we talked about the southern limits of the project and on the map here, the area, it looks like the, the northern extents are at Highway S. If we look at the overall map on this, you know, generally speaking, it looks like it might be the south one-third of the, the length of the south branch. Um, if you go back to the slide that's earlier, yep.
This one.
Right. So, so certainly there's a lot of land area for restoration there. I'm just curious, um, you know, this is, this project limits is really a third of the overall length of the south branch. Uh, and I understand it takes a lot more money and funding to do the north sections, but is that on the radar screen? Is that something that's looking forward, that there, that there's some enhancements that can be made north of Highway S up to the, the north branch connection?
Well, I think there's always something potentially on the table for that, but what we do know is in this section here in the southern portion, it, it's the area that has the biggest, can have the biggest impact, has the most area to affect with restoration. Uh, just from a standpoint, as, as the river goes farther north, um, there's, there's some homes there, the railroad tracks are there, the land becomes a little more narrow and there's less ability to be able to meander the stream. And so, this is the area that has the, the expanse of land to basically do the full restoration from a standpoint of, uh, being able to meandering the stream as much as possible and creating the, as much of the, the wetland components that you can't do elsewhere.
Okay. Um, there have been several projects on the main branch of the Pike River going through petrifying springs and whatnot.
Correct.
Um, again, I'm not fully familiar with what those have improved or, I mean, I'm, I'm sure they have enhanced it tremendously, but would that be something that would be looked at in there? Is there some improvements, you know, to be made coming further up the south branch or, I'm, I'm just asking if there's a bigger scope in mind here for the, for the south branch?
Yeah. At this point, this is what we have before us and I, I see Dave might have, uh, some additional comments on this if you wanted to step up to the, to the mic, Dave?
Well, the short answer is yes, we want to restore.
Dave, can you go to the microphone, please? Because people at home who may be watching can hear you.
Yes, we want to restore the whole south branch. Um, and we are already talking to landowners north of, uh, this project area. Um, Andy is correct in that there's a little less real estate to be able to do that, but there's still, there's still land available that's floodplain, not developable, um, very hydrogyic soils. So, taking the same concept, the same strategy, maybe tucking it in a little bit more, a little less meandering, but still providing those benefits. The, the main issue as you get further down the south branch, which is actually going north, is you've got some really high stream banks with some really massive erosion. So, those projects are, um, uh, from a pollutant load standpoint, they'll, if we're able to restore those areas, the lift is very high. The, the expense with doing that is also pretty high. But it is our intent and hopefully I'm still around to see the Phase 5, which gets near Hawthorne Hollow. But yes, we want to restore the whole south branch.
And I think just to clarify, I mean, from Route Pike Win's standpoint, Pike is in their name, that, that's obviously their goal. From a county perspective, you know, our goal is to work in the area that we have before us today, which is, we see would have the largest impact on the watershed.
Sure. Thanks, understand that. Just trying to get a global picture of the, the, what's going on. Um, are we able to get a copy of the estimate that the Army Corp has put together for this just to get a, a better understanding of the nuts and bolts of kind of where, where the numbers are coming from? It's a big number and I was just curious if we had some, some visibility into that.
Um, from a standpoint, you mean like the, their cost breakout? Is that what you're asking for?
Mm-hmm. Right. Yeah. So, they've got a 60% set of plans, I'm just curious if we can see what the estimate looks like, if there's some.
I'm, I'm sure we can get some information.
Yeah, the, the 60% deliverables included a 60% cost estimate.
Okay.
So, an estimate as the 60% was designed, where if we were changing design, we would have to relook at that. But yes, we, we provided that in the documents.
Okay. All right.
So, Supervisor Carroll, is that like the breakdown of what that full number is? How's it break down into all the different numbers?
Yes. Yep. And then, you know, I thought at one time there was some money set aside here, some allocated for property acquisition. Is there still a, a, a portion of this that's for property acquisition beyond the, the 58 or the 60 acres on the Midwest side?
So, of the county share, there, the property cost is part of that.
Okay. Do we know which parcels need to be acquired, um, you know, for the project yet? I'm not sure you do.
So, the, the areas that were highlighted in, in yellow.
Okay. So, all of it then? Okay. And so then the, it's hard to see, but it, it appears that the Midwest section is right there in the middle on the western side. Um, so it's east of the CPKC rail line, north of 158. Is that the, is that, am I understanding it properly that that's the parcel that the DNR is acquiring?
That's the area that the DNR has their interest to, to work in, right? With the wetland mitigation.
Okay. So, it looks like it goes about up to the ATC transmission line then?
From an east-west standpoint, correct.
Okay. Do we, um, the triangle piece that's over by the detention center, is that something that we already own or do we have to acquire that?
The county already owns that property. It has, uh, the airport branch tributary on it and so that ended up, because the county already owned it, made it easy for it to be part of the project.
Sure. Okay. All right. That's, those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Carroll. Any other questions or comments from supervisors? Supervisor Garcia.
So, the projected project outcomes, these are the only things that we can expect out of the, out of the project. Because from the citizens' comments, um, I was inclined, you know, to look into this a little bit more to, to prove something that's going to help, you know, the residents and their residences and, uh, the issues that they're having, right? Can we say, can we, can we look these, uh, citizens, uh, in the face and tell them that this is going to help their properties from flooding?
I don't think we can say and quantify at this point that there is going to be a flood impact downstream.
So, so would this project prevent or reduce the flooding in the citizens' properties?
I can't give you an answer that that would, would take place. I think we're always hopeful from a standpoint of when you create more area to hold water, that there is a positive impact going down, but from a standpoint of actually quantifying that, we were not able to quantify that through, 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 uh, data.
Okay. Thank you, that's all I had.
Supervisor Gamma.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, will this presentation be available, available for the public?
I guess yes. I see some shaking heads. I know after this meeting, uh, I am going to send an email to all the supervisors, so you have it electronically.
Okay.
And, um, I think that, being looked at, being put up online.
On the county website?
So, the communications person is gone right now, but there would be the ability to put it up online.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Gamma. Any other questions or comments from supervisors? Okay, seen none. I would like to acknowledge the significant contributions of the Route Pike Win, the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources, and the Army Corps of Engineers and their dedicated teams in advancing this important project. The collaboration and expertise from each of these organizations has been essential in shaping the progress we've seen so far. The combined efforts have provided a strong foundation for the project's success and we recognize the value role each partner has played in moving this forward. From in-depth research and environmental assessments to technical planning, your work has been critical in addressing the challenges at hand. The thoroughness with each organization, with their approach, with the various aspects of this project demonstrates the high level of professionalism and commitment to achieving sustainable outcomes. I would like to extend my appreciation to our internal staff, Andy, Shelley, Chris, Patty, Barna, Corp Counsel. Your contributions have been invaluable in supporting this initiative and ensuring the continued momentum. Furthermore, I want to thank County Executive Kirkman for her insightful leadership and her support of this project. Her commitment to the success of this initiative has been instrumental and I appreciate the direction and advocacy she has provided along the way. Tonight's presentation highlights the substantial progress made and it's clear that the efforts invested have laid the groundwork for future success. The Pike River South Branch Project will be impactful to our generation as well as for many generations to come. As we continue to move through the phases of this initiative, it's important to recognize the dedication of all the parties involved in ensuring that we stay on track and meet the goals outlined for the benefit of the community and the environment. If you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to Andy or staff and attend the meetings of PDEC and, and Finance to have your questions answered if, as this moves along. So, again, I'd like to thank everyone for coming tonight. I know you always don't like to have another meeting, but I thought it was important to share this information, especially with so many new supervisors here on the board this evening. Motion by Supervisor Decker to adjourn, second by Supervisor Nordigan, all in favor? Aye opposed. We are adjourned.